Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Wednesday, February 29th, 2012 Leap Year Special Meeting of the Glendale Transportation and Parking Commission. May we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Fawad?
Here.
Commissioner Sahakian?
Here.
Commissioner Yakubian?
Here.
Commissioner Magasarian?
Here.
Chairperson Weisman?
Here. What is next, please?
Item 1A, Flag Salute, Chairperson Weisman.
Please join me in saluting our country's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and what is next, please?
Item 2A, Posting of Agenda. Report of the Secretary, the agenda for the Wednesday, February 29th, 2012 Special Meeting of the Glendale Transportation and Parking Commission was posted by Friday, February 27th, 2012, before 5:30 PM on the bulletin board outside of City Home.
Thank you. What is next, please?
Selection of a new chairperson for the Transportation and Parking Commission for one year.
As Chair, I will declare that nominations are now in order for electing a new Chair, and I take great pleasure in making my last official act as outgoing Chair the nomination of my colleague Commissioner Fawad to be Commissioner for the next year. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I will ask for a vote on the nomination of Commissioner Fawad.
(inaudible)
Okay, I'm sorry. So, we have a card for the election of a Chair. If you would pass that over to me, so I can officially call on Mr. Milano.
Thank you very much, Chair Weisman, members of the Traffic and Parking Commission, and city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. I have been coming to various different committee and commission meetings where this particular item is being presented, and it is my suggestion that individuals that are not the Chair submit their own names to be considered Chair. And the reason is, is that sometimes it appears as if the process of selecting a Chair has been predefined or pre-arranged. I would like to know if there is someone who wants to be a Chair to know the reasons why they want to be a Chair, because the one thing that the Chair of a Commission has is the ability to be able to direct the agenda and to set the agenda for the future meetings. And I think that is a very powerful and very instrumental capability. So, I am making a suggestion that all the members who are not Chair submit their names to be considered for this position, and to, for us to hear why it is that you want to be a Chair, and why it is that you don't, you know, if that's the case. Because eventually, next year, you know, the usual practice to just rotate them to the next individual who has not been a Chair. I like to see someone who's going to be proactive and takes on the issues that are difficult that need to be addressed, not simply a matter of simply handing over the Chair to somebody else because it's their turn. I'd like to see someone of conviction take over this position. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. I will again call for any other nominations. Hearing none, I'll ask for a vote for Commissioner Fawad.
Yes.
Commissioner Yakubian?
Yes.
Commissioner Magasarian?
Yes.
Commissioner Fawad?
Uh, yes.
Chairperson Weisman?
Yes. And with that, I will switch seats here.
(inaudible) I hope I can carry forth the duties as, since you've appointed me. So, what's next on the agenda?
For communication, discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. The Commission may question the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision.
Do we have any cards?
Yes, put them on your desk, right next to you.
Ha. Herbert Milano.
Commission Chair Fawad, members of the Traffic and Parking Commission, Transportation and Parking, city staff, my name is Herbert Milano. Roughly once a year, I come before the Commission to present a set of items, and I've been doing this for quite a few years now, that I figure that should be activities that should be annualized with regard to the, an evaluation of major issues that the city faces concerning transportation and parking. One of those items has to do with traffic safety and pedestrian injuries. And I've been requesting that you agendize during the year a report by the police department that would give us an idea on the status of the efforts that are being made and whether they are being successful. Last year, there were 104 traffic injuries, pedestrian traffic injuries. The year before, there were 105, the year before, a little bit over 100, and the number of traffic injuries have remained fairly steady during these years, even though the police department now receives additional funding for the various different initiatives. But I believe that the public ought to know information such as, where are the hotspots? What do these accidents have in common? Where in the city are they occurring geographically? Is there a trend with regard to the age of the pedestrians or the time of the day? I love to see a map where it shows where the particular areas where traffic, pedestrian traffic injuries is taking place, so that we can assess whether there is an issue having to do with insufficient traffic signals, whether it's an engineering problem, whether there is additional education, whether the effort that is being, that is being conducted is being sufficient or is probably not directed in the right place. I think it has been an issue for Glendale for a very long time. The issue with traffic injuries to the elderly has been ever-present, and I think it is pertinent for this Commission to agendize that issue and be presented, and ask the police department to give you a report in conjunction with, with the, with the city staff that covers this, this particular Commission. The second item that I want to bring up is an issue having to do with measuring traffic flow and traffic congestion. Today, at about 3:30, I was driving on Colorado Boulevard, heading east, to see how heavy the traffic flow was as you head towards the freeway, the 5 freeway, and I noticed a fairly large construction taking place. It looks like there's going to be several hundred multifamily apartment units there. And I wondered whether those plans were presented to this Commission in the past year for evaluation of the impact of that multifamily housing building, which is huge, and how it would impact the traffic flow. I come to Glendale every day, and I drive often times on Glendale Avenue, and I can tell you that down here in this area, the traffic congestion is getting worse. That's my perception. And so, I'm going to suggest that the city bring up an annual report on the average traffic speeds during peak times. I know that there are other engineering facilities doing it. Some cities do a percentage of the posted speed limit, and they do an evaluation. I think that we should have that kind of information to be presented, not only to you, but also to the planning Commission, and to have a full assessment of how difficult certain areas in Glendale are, so that when topics come up before the city council, before the planning Commission, that we have a map that tells us maybe green lines, red lines, yellow lines, you know, the way we see the actual traffic flows on the Internet, so that we can get a proper assessment. The third item I would like to bring, if I still have time, is on the issue on the selection of commissioners and the effort that I feel that the city should do in order to do a proper outreach to bring a sufficient number of individuals who are both capable and interested in putting the energy necessary for this Commission. I have, and I expressed many times, the, the objection that I had of having Ms. Yakubian being selected after the only one other individual who applied for this position, and she happens to be the sister of R. Najarian. I think that the issue of, of perhaps some conflict of interest might be there, especially if Mr. Najarian is aligned properly with some individuals who are, who want to develop, you know, large apartment complexes. The, the issue of nepotism, I think, is a serious one, and I think that we should try to avoid that. So, I, it is my opinion that the Commission should encourage the city clerk and others responsible to do a proper outreach to find commissioners whenever there's a vacancy. Thank you very much, and I hope that you can agendize any of these items in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. I think that was our only oral communication speaker. Thank you. What's next, please?
Information only, report regarding Glendale Bicycle Transportation Plan Review and Comment on the City of Glendale Draft Bicycle Transportation Plan.
Let me turn this over to John O. Bagnanian for his comments.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the Transportation Parking Commission, staff is very pleased that after almost a year, we have brought this Transportation Bicycle Transportation Plan to the Transportation Parking Commission. This is a truly big effort on behalf of the city, on behalf of the community, our consultant team that has been working with us to develop this plan. I wanted to obviously share this with the Commission, and in fact, two of the Commissioner, Chairperson Fawad and Commissioner Yakubian, who were also a part of a bicycle advisory committee that was formed, to develop the bicycle transportation plan, just wanted to recognize, maybe if they can stand up, and a number of the bicycle advisory committee members that are here tonight, Bill and Ry, if you could, and Carter, and that they were part of a larger group of residents. These are bicyclists, interested parties that were part of a bicycle advisory committee that worked with the city, that in order to develop the transportation plan, we also commissioners from Planning Commission, Parks and Recreation, Police Department, we had members, Glendale Community College, we had members, and Glendale Unified School District, and representative from Los Angeles Bicycle Coalition was part of the team. So, essentially, what we did is, when we started this study, we had community outreach meeting, we had meetings with the bicycle advisory committee to essentially put together a map of how we want to develop this plan, so it's all-inclusive, everybody can provide comments on the plan, and we can develop the plan together. So, every step of the way that Ryan Snyder, which will make the presentation in a minute, the plan was developed, we received input from the bicycle advisory committee, and we've had pretty good input also through our community outreach meeting that we have conducted. We have a bicycle transportation plan website on the city's website that we've been receiving comments, a copy of the comments were, are attached to the staff report. These are a summary of the comments that we have received. We have detailed comments, but these were comments that were pretty much our consultant team summarized and put them in the right categories with respect to the different chapters, or with respect to the key issues that were raised. Along with the development of the plan, we have been working on a number of efforts that are already included in the plan and will be on an ongoing basis, such as installation of bicycle racks, such as part of our capital improvement project, as we are improving streets, paving streets, doing slurry seals, anything, any facilities that were included in the plan, we're not waiting for the plan to be developed or approved in the future. We will, we are including them as part of our approval when we go to city council. If it's a bicycle lane can be striped on those streets, such as recently Verdugo Road, we put in sharos on Verdugo Road. We are going forward with this as we move any part of this plan in, that is, developed. I've outlined in the staff report, the Class II bike lanes or Class III bike lanes have been included. Also, what's one factor is important tonight is, we are, we're presenting this report to the Commission as a draft report. We're not asking for you to approve the report. We really want you to comment on it, because we're still getting a lot of good comments, and we felt that it will be appropriate for us to include all the comments we're receiving, receive the comments from the Commission. We have tentatively scheduled a meeting with the city council in the form of a study session on March 27th, if I'm correct, to have a study session for the city council, so comments from the Commission and the plan will be presented to the Commission, to the city council. Once we get council approval, in general consensus, on the key elements of the plan, we know if council is okay with the idea of the plan, we will then finalize the report. We're going to bring this back to Commission for a formal recommendation to the city council, and then adopt the plan by the city council, and then we will move forward. Tentatively speaking, I think we're looking into May, early, May for the complete adoption of the plan, and in between is when we will go to the study session, go, come back to the Commission for a final approval, recommendation to the council, and then get approval from the council. In this process, there's also an environmental review required, that we will be conducting that by our planning department, so planning department will conduct the environmental CQ requirements for this plan. However, if there's specific improvements that we plan as part of a capital project, that specific improvement will maybe include as part of that project as we go to city council. So, we may not have the environmental document for the entire plan, but on a typical street, if we're going to put in a bicycle facility, it will have its own specific environmental review for that. So, make sure we, we meet the air quality as well as environmental requirement for that. So, tonight, we are certainly requesting Commission's input on the plan, what you like, things that you think we need to add or emphasize as part of the plan, and I know we have a number of the public here, we've tried to invite them to be here for public input. With that, Mr. Chairman, if I may, turn that over to Ryan Snyder, who has extensive experience in the development of Bicycle Transportation Plan. He's a consultant, he's developed a lot of guidelines for bicycle planning and designs, and Ryan will give you an overview of the Bicycle Transportation Plan. And then, at the end of his presentation, I want to also share with you the road diet idea that council recently approved. So, council requested us to do a road diet on Honolulu, or look at different road diet options, and they approved the road diet. I want to give you an overview of that, and also a quick overview of the maintenance-related issues with the installation of various types of bicycle facilities. Our maintenance administrator was not able to be here tonight, so I'm going to cover for him. We've done quite a bit of research on, you know, colored bike lanes, or type B sharos and so on, that Ryan is going to present to you, making sure if we're going to install something, we can be able to maintain it. You know, we know what the cost is, because there's a lot of very good ideas out there that are being tried by other cities, so we want to be able to make sure that they are valid and are practical for their installation. With that, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity. I'll turn it over to Ryan.
And may I interject, being part of Bicycle Commission, Committee, I can attest that the outreach to the public was exhaustive, a lot of comments, some of which came from me. The comments were reflected upon, many included, so I would commend the city on the outreach. Many, several community meetings, so I think, I like to think we have the pulse of the community on what a bike plan should be, and as this rolls into effect, I think Glendale can be proud of that we will finally have an up-to-date bike plan.
Commissioners, thank you. I have a brief presentation to kind of introduce the plan to you and give you the highlights of it. As has been said, maybe I don't have to repeat this, but we had, did go through a pretty extensive outreach procedure. I think probably, if not the most, one of the very most exhaustive procedures I've ever been through on a bike plan, and I've prepared quite a few of these, and we had the committee, we had public workshops, and lots of opportunity for feedback, and the website, and so a lot of back and forth, and quite a few changes made based on the feedback we have, and also, we received in the last round, some more comments that we still have to go back and reflect upon and make some more modifications based on those comments. The plan is organized in the following way. We've got eight chapters, an introduction describing the background of it, a chapter describing public outreach, and by the way, what's in here, many of these elements are required by Caltrans to make the city eligible for funding. So, we've kind of structured the plan in a way to ensure that the city would be, would make itself eligible for the funding, and a description of public outreach is part of that. We discuss the planning context, relationship to other sort of plans in the area, as well as the county's metro plan, and how this fits in and links with, with those, as well as other plans within the city. We have a section, a chapter on goals, policies, and actions, and this was something that sets the philosophical framework and background for the plan, such that anybody in the future working with the plan or implementing the plan can look back and understand what the intent of the, and the thinking was in the plan. And this was also something that we had extensive, or back and forth with, with the committee, and lots of wordsmithing, as some of those were, who were involved, will recall. We've got a chapter on existing conditions that identify existing bikeways and parking, links to transit, and, and the other things that are facilities and programs that are out there to help bicyclists. The core of what I'm going to present tonight are the planned projects, so that you get a sense of really what is being planned in the way of, you know, bikeways and parking and the like. We also have a chapter on funding and implementation. We've identified a pretty exhaustive list of funding sources that the city could use to apply for, or, or use to fund the projects that are in this plan, and an implementation section that provides a guide as to what would be funded first, what might be funded second, and thirds, so a sense of direction on that. And last, chapter on design guidelines, the types of, the sort of recommendations on the, the way we design bike lanes, and different types of bike lanes, and bikeways, and parking, and, and all of those sorts of things. And what I want to go over now is the different bikeway types that we put in the plan. There are a number of bikeway types out there now, and an expanding list of what's being used. We have bike paths, like along the LA River, and we've proposed bike paths along, say, for example, the Verdugo Wash, and along the rail line, along San Fernando Road, potential corridor for, for bike paths. We've proposed some bike lanes, just simply a striped lane similar to what you already have on, on Glen Oaks. We've also proposed, in some cases, improvements to existing bike lanes. So, there might be a five-foot wide bike lane there now, and we'll recommend widening that to six feet, where we've got the width to do so. There are also what we call bike routes, and these are all classification systems that Caltrans uses. We are now enhancing those with these, these sharos, I think you're probably familiar with those, the shared-use arrows. You do have these on some streets, and so we've recommended those, along with the signs that go along with them. So, these are kind of the standard bikeway types, and, and now we're sort of showing what exists in the way of your bikeways. The city has put some good bikeways in, but once the plan is implemented, there will be a much more complete network. And we can see a map here, we'll, okay. We're on the map, second map. Second, okay. And we'll zoom in on, this is the existing and proposed bikeways, the whole network together. We'll zoom in on this later on, but you can see that when this is completed, there'll be a nice network. Someone wouldn't have to go too far to access a bikeway, so be able to ride throughout the city on some sort of designated bikeway. And we'll break this up into the sort of northern section, and then, different maps on different parts of the city. Okay. Yeah, there we go. So, the bicycle plan has 14 miles of bike paths proposed, 19 miles of bike lanes, and 66 miles of bike routes. So, it's a pretty, pretty, like I said, pretty good network, and then three miles of streets that would be improved, and, and this is essentially Glendale Avenue, where we would say, if there's room to do so, it's not a designated bikeway, but if, if it could be restripped, to maybe add another foot or so to the curb lanes of the bicyclists, just have a more comfortable place to ride, that type of thing could be done. Just by comparison of what Glendale has vis-à-vis some of the other cities in the county, a little bit more bikeways than your neighbor Burbank, Long Beach, so we've got about 25 miles of bikeways now. Long Beach has about 114 miles of bikeways. Pasadena's been pretty aggressive with their planning and implementation. They've got over 81 miles of bikeways in Pasadena. Santa Monica, another city that's been pretty aggressive, but a smaller city geographically, 37 miles, and West Hollywood, five and a half miles of bikeways. So, Glendale is actually certainly within the range of the cities in the county that are doing the most, and these are really some of the more aggressive cities in the county, so, so Glendale is really right up there with them, and again, with the implementation should do much better yet, although these other cities are rapidly implementing their plans, too. So, if it's a race, we'll just have to see how it all goes, but, you know, these, these are generally the cities that are being most aggressive in the county, so you're, you know, right up there in that, in that category. Bikeway enhancements will require council approval in some cases. We have information on the cost of implementation. One of the things that will be important will be, as John O. mentioned, some of the recommendations in here called for coloring of bike lanes and, and some paint. We do have to deal with the issue of paint and what the maintenance cost would be, and so some of these may come later on, with council approval, or as some of these issues with maintenance and paint are resolved. Some of the bikeways would require Federal Highway Administration and California Traffic Control Device Committee experimentation, because they're considered experimental. There are cities around the country that are experimenting around with things like buffered bike lanes, for example, and that's, that's the primary one. But these experiments are being conducted, and are, they're pretty easy to get permission to conduct, but as of now, they're not yet, some of these are all approved devices. I suspect in the next couple of years, things like buffered bike lanes will be an approved traffic control device under the California MUTCD. And some places might have to obtain right-of-way as well. So, these are some of the other type bikeway types. Colored bike lanes have recently been approved for use, so it's just a bike lane that's colored, and that's the one on the right, and that is the color that, that's being used. You can see one of the first ones in the country, in downtown Los Angeles now. We've also got buffered bike lanes, like the one on the left, and this is really essentially where we've got a bike lane, and there's enough space to put a little bit of, you know, sort of painted, hatched-out buffer between the bike lane and the traffic, or in some cases, even between the bike lane and parked cars. So, and that, the way this one is, there's no on-street parking, this is perfectly legal to use the way it is. If there's on-street parking, this is one of the devices you would have to go through an experimental process to, to put in. This is the other one that actually would, would require an experimental process. This is what we're calling a type B shero, so it's really just a Class III signed route. But it's got a, in this case, this is in Long Beach on Second Street, it's got a green painted swath under it to make it very clear to both the bicyclists and the motorists that bicyclists can take the lane. This is a street that doesn't have space for bike lanes, and this is the kind of street where we would want to put this, a place where it's an important part of the bikeway network, but we don't have space for bike lanes, but streets where there might be significant traffic, and it would be important that the bicyclists have a little bit more than just a stencil in the street. We're calling another type, there's this other version, and sorry for the quality of this picture, this is a, an email, or electronic download, but this is another version of this, what we're calling type B shero. This is in Brookline, Massachusetts, where they're taking the shero and just putting some bars along the side of it, and then spacing the sharos very close together. So, it does something very similar to what the Long Beach type would do, and this is something that may be just about as effective, and, and may have fewer implications for paint and maintenance and all of that. Road diets are something that we're looking at doing, and road diet is essentially where we take And road diet is essentially where we take a street and we reduce the number of lanes in order to create space for bike lanes. This picture here shows a classic road diet, where you go from a four-lane street to a two-lane street with a center turn lane and, and enough space to stripe bike lanes. This is something that would be done only on streets that have the capacity to carry the cars without, you know, without the four lanes. And these are also something that would fall into a category that we're putting in what we're calling a study corridor. And this has been approved for Honolulu as an experiment already. One of the other techniques that might be used, particularly on a place like Brand, is what we call reverse enangled parking. This is where the motorists back into a parking space, an angled parking, instead of pull-in. The benefit of this is that when the motors are pulling out, they can actually see what they're pulling out into. A number of cities are, are using this now, and it's actually considered safer, not only for bicyclists, but for motorists as well, and for kids getting out of the cars, so they're, when they get out, they're getting out towards the sidewalk and not out towards an active travel lane. So this is the type of thing that could make a street safer to ride on where there is angled parking. This slide shows a list of designated study corridors, where the issues were complex enough and important enough that it would require further study and perhaps council approval because of the implications of them. Brand Boulevard was a street that we had more comments on, I think, by far than any other street as we went through the public process. Brand is a street that cyclists frequently use. It's got a lot of destinations along it. It's direct. It connects to out-of-town destinations and connects to, down towards the Transit Center and is widely used, and so it's a really important street. The problem with it is now, it's not a real easy place to stripe bike lanes because of the way the angled parking is. And so there are possible ways of putting bike lanes there, but it was felt that the implications of altering Brand Boulevard, whether it be reversing the angled parking or whatever it might take, or even creating, or converting angled parking to parallel parking, something like that, would be a significant enough issue that it's something that ought to involve the merchants and residents and other people, and a little bit more study than what we were doing in the context of this bike plan. So this designated as a study corridor, where we understand that a, some sort of bike facility is needed, and exactly what that ends up being needs to consider the desires of the merchants, and it's also a street with buses on it, and how the bike lanes would interact with buses and, and all that thing. So sort of, sort of deferred the, any, you know, hard, hard decisions at this point to a later time. Most of the rest of these are road diets that, again, would be something that would require extensive public outreach to the residents and folks that live near or along these, these streets and roads. Honolulu, as John O. said, has already been approved by the City Council as sort of an experimental road diet, again, on streets that we believe the traffic volumes are such that road diets could be done without impacting capacity. But that, again, they would require enough public outreach to ensure that, that these are a good idea to move forward. And then the Verdugo Wash bike path is something that, you know, is, is not a typical, we frequently put bike paths along rivers and flood control channels, but that's a box channel, as you know. And the bike path would probably have to go down in the bottom somewhere, or even, you know, somebody, you know, at one of our Safe Roots to School workshops, you may remember, suggested capping it, putting a linear park along it. An expensive proposition, but something that may have enough value to it that in the long run could be a real asset to the city. And that would connect everything from the very northern parts of Glendale, past some schools, to downtown and connect up with the LA River. It could be a real gem of not only a bikeway, but something that, you know, Glendale would really treasure as, as one of the most important things in the city. But a complicated project, something, again, that deserves more study. And similar, the, the San Fernando Railroad bike path is something that would need to be worked out with the railroad, and they're not always real anxious to do that kind of thing. Although I will say that in other parts of that very same corridor, particularly in the city of LA, they are putting bike paths along, and in Burbank, they're putting a bike path along the same railroad right-of-way. So it's not unthinkable to, to conceive that there might be a bike path there. So going through some of the different areas, we can see some of the bikeways that are existing and proposed. These are key sort of north-south connections, as well as east-west connections. They do, these do connect to places outside of the city, Foothill Boulevard being a key area, and also connections along Honolulu Avenue that are regional, as well as connecting, crossing the 210 freeways are a really important aspect. You know, we need to pick routes that cross the freeway that are not too difficult for cyclists to get through. Moving a little further south, here's Honolulu Avenue to, to test the road diet, but we want to connect with the Montrose Shopping District here, make sure that those merchants and shoppers are well-served there, and trying to find some calmer north-south connections to, to these streets. Moving further down, this is probably the most challenging corridor in the whole city. There's a real need to get from the north to the south without any great choices. Again, if we're ever able to put a bike path along the Verdugo Wash, that would make a super corridor, a superbikway, and a, a great way to connect. But again, the, sort of the physical and, and fiscal challenges there need to be studied. Verdugo Road is obviously a, a very important road for cyclists, one that, again, in the long run may have a road diet with some nice bike lanes along, along it. In the short run, we're proposing the Type B sharos along both that and Cuyahoga. So we wouldn't take any lanes out, but at least they would be prominent bikeways that, you know, cyclists would be able to use. Oh, and there was actually another, going back, another sort of alternative connection for people that just even with the Type B sharos are not comfortable riding on Verdugo or Cuyahoga. And also to get away to, to connect to the college, the sort of back route, Country Club, Hermosita, and then through the Verdugo Park, and then kind of going back behind the Civic Building there, we've, we've created a route that would enable somebody to still get through, and then connect over towards where Mountain would come, would come in. And sort of the, this other area here around the college, getting to the college is very, very important. The routes are already used pretty heavily in the Rossmoyn area, along Mountain and so forth. And then further east, Chevy Chase and others are used as recreational roads for the, sort of the more ambitious cyclists, people that ride over to Pasadena, maybe to the Rose Bowl, and, and ride through the, the mountains. And then in western Glendale, there are some key routes in here. Glen Oaks Boulevard in many places is wide enough to, we could actually widen the bike lanes there and create really nice bike lanes, and even put buffers on them in some places. We've got other key connections, like Kenneth Road would be a good connection. The Glenwood Stalker Route connects with schools, and we also need to link up with sort of Glen Oaks that is a key backbone already, but, but, sorry, I wasn't watching that one, but has connections further east and then to, to more schools over there. One really important bikeway in here is Sonora Avenue. Right now, the bike counts that you have show this to be the busiest bicycle street in the city. People are riding down there to access the LA River, and so we, we put some, some colored bike lanes there. And then the central areas, there are some real key areas in here. We've got Type B sharos along Broadway, a very important east-west connection that takes cyclists through downtown and across the city. And then we've got different ways we would connect on Central Avenue and Los Feliz, Cerritos to get down to the Transit Center. We also want to build on the work that was done previously with Riverside Drive and the Maple Street corridors. And Louise Street was another one that was kind of an important street here. It goes under the freeway, it's a nice pleasant street to ride on, and some of those streets would receive the sharos, but also maybe some traffic calming, maybe some circles at some of the intersections and some features like you have down on, on Maple. And then other north-south roads here, again, Brand Boulevard, wide enough in the north end to paint some colored bike lanes, but on the south end, a study corridor. We've got Orange Street, one that Commissioner Fuad suggested in our, our meetings can be, can have bike lanes on it. Central Avenue, when it's widened, would have the width for bike lanes, and then further south, the Type B sharos we're recommending. And Glen Dale Avenue, as I mentioned earlier, not a designated bikeway, but one, if some restriping the lanes could make a better place for cyclists to ride. Chevy Trace Drive was another really important one that we're recommending the Type B sharos on. So those are the bike routes. We do have quite a bit of information about the programmatic parts of the bike plan. These are just brief samples of what's in there. Want a safety education program in city schools. We want to have an encouragement program, things like a sequevia, where the streets are blocked off, or maybe one Sunday every once in a while, cyclists can ride through. It's been real popular in other cities, including Los Angeles. What kind of enforcement programs can, can the city get involved with, particularly with the police department? And then continuing some of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Councils that the city's done for, for the evaluation, there's some information about that. The Funding and Implementation Chapter identifies the need for about five, just over $5 million for bikeways in sort of the primary bicycle network. That doesn't include the more high-cost bikeways like Verdugo Wash or the San Fernando Railroad. And again, these are very rough planning-level cost estimates, again, once a study is done, and we better understand what needs to be done, we could have better cost estimates there. But those are separated out, they are part of the bike plan, but they're not part of sort of the primary bikeway network. We've also got over three, near close to $400,000 in here for parking, which is a real important convenience for the cyclists and really a need. And the bike, the plan also talks about the, the cost for design and maintenance, and to set aside $100,025 every year for programs, the education programs, the encouragement and so forth, so that there's ongoing programs that keep things going. We have a prioritization list, and basically what we did to establish this was to begin at a public meeting and also in the technical advisory committee that we set up, we had a dot exercise, where we had a chart of all of the, the bikeways we proposed, and we gave people blue and red dots. I think the, I can't remember exactly, I think the blue dots were top priority and the red dots were second priority or vice versa, and then everybody got so many dots, and they allocated their dots next to the projects that they thought were the highest priority. And we added up all the dots, you know, the high priority getting two points, and the second priority getting one point, and nothing is the sort of third priority. And we came with a, with a, a three-tiered list, short-term, medium-term, and long-term, based on that. But also, we took those priorities established by the public, and I did look at them and rearranged a few. Probably 85 to 90% of the priorities were set by the public, but there were some where, you know, often the public will have their favorite bikeway as the one that goes to their house, so we understand that. But, you know, if I saw somewhere where somebody missed the college, or downtown, or there's an important route somewhere, something in Transit Center, I, I rearranged a few of these, but that's how we did it. So these are the short-term priorities. And as John O. said, one of the things, why, even though these are in the priority list like this, these are essentially to guide the city in, in its application of, for grants. But as things go, as the streets are resurfaced, there may be a project that's in priority three, but that's the time to put it in. And in fact, most of the painted treatments should probably be done when the streets are resurfaced, so they really don't cost much extra, if, if any at all. So these are our short-term priority bikeways. We've got our, our medium-term priority bikeways. Oh, one thing to point out on the short term, a big chunk of this was, you'll see down to the bar on the Oak View Drive, Verdugo Park Civic Auditorium bikeway, the one that kind of went behind, that I described to provide people with some alternative to get from the north to the south. But without that one, then, the, the cost is significantly less. Our medium-term priority bikeways, and then our long-term priority bikeways. As I said earlier, a chapter on design guidelines, everything from bikeway design to signing to guidance on bike parking and a host of other things. With that, I will conclude the presentation, and I guess, do we?
I, I think we'd like to have Mr. Magdani and give his comments. And I, I'm suggesting to the commission that perhaps after your comments, we maybe let the public speak, and then we can sort of give all our comments with the public comments in mind. Objections? Mr. Magdani?
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to briefly, as I stated, the Honolulu road diet, so that we can kind of get an idea of what we're going to be testing on Honolulu and how, what we are going to do. Mr. Zoravant will just bring up that design. The Honolulu road diet that the City Council approved essentially is going to be, as, as it's shown on this map, if you look at the east side of Honolulu near the shopping park at Orange Dale, our goal is to get to Locker Center and go beyond Locker Center. We had sort of said $125,000 that we have available for funding, and we will do that work. Basically, the idea would be to grind what the, the existing cross-section is. If we can go to the next slide, please. Essentially, as Ryan had mentioned, the road diet typically is a four-lane street. In some cases, in this case of Honolulu, on the left side, did you see the, we already have a two-way left turn lane, and on the right side, there's a section of Honolulu that doesn't have a two-way left turn lane. So ultimately, you preserve the on-street parking, which is critical. We have residential, commercial, retail along Honolulu. We will put in a bike lane on both sides. We will have one lane in each direction and a center two-way left turn lane. On the slide to the left, you already have the center two-way left turn, it remains. On the right, we will be creating a center two-way left turn lane. Ideally, the, the idea, the benefits of a, a road diet is, well, some of the studies that have been done that we have reviewed is essentially when you start reducing the, the lane width, obviously the traffic flow is going to go slower, the speeds, there is a speed reduction. With the two-way left turn lane, you allow access to an, in and out of driveways, so cars that are right now making a, a left turn out of the, the middle lane, now they can get into the two-way left turn lane to make their left turns, or leaving a driveway turn into a left turn lane. With road diets also, you are able then to actually stripe a bike lane. In this case, we couldn't stripe a bike lane because we didn't have the width, so by taking away a lane, essentially you're creating the bike lane. In addition, that lane width that we're taking away allows us to put in a buffer, which is a safer design when you're designing a bike lane. What we were planning to do is, with approval from City Council to do the road diet in this section of Honolulu, is we are going to do an extensive outreach, notify all the residents, businesses, including commuters, along the Honolulu stretch, making sure everybody's fully aware what we're planning to do. Tentatively, we have scheduled an outreach meeting on March 29 at Spar Heights. We will publicize that, and it will, will create basically a workshop type of outreach where people can come in. We will have the entire stretch there with aerial photos and everything, making sure everybody understands how we're going to design it. And come June, when we are going to have a couple contracts going out for slurry seal, what we're planning to do, included in one of our contracts, we will be grinding the stripe, existing striping on Honolulu, putting in a slurry seal, and then we'll stripe the bicycle facility. existing striping on Honolulu, putting in a slurry seal, and then we'll stripe the bicycle facility. We plan to test this for probably a period of at least nine to, nine months to 12 months. We will also conduct before-and-after studies. In other words, we will measure the speeds on Honolulu, we'll measure the traffic volume, we'll count bicycles, how many bicycles are riding on Honolulu before. We'll look at the accident history and then we will do the same thing after a period of a year where we will see what the difference is. And this is what typically has been done. City of Burbank just recently did something very similar. They did a before-and-after study. So for, on our own, in our own community, we'll be able to see how effective a road diet is, what the benefits are, what are the problems? If we experience delays at intersection, how do you deal with that? Because those are some of the issues that are raised when you have a road diet. And we will also review all the literature that's coming out and share our, with other traffic engineers with the cities to see how effective the road diets and what they've learned from their experiments. We will share that with others as well. So that's really the Honolulu plan that we're planning to do. The next thing I wanted to share with TPC members was that our maintenance, we basically maintain our own striping in the city. When we pave the street, we put in new striping. In general, we use thermoplastic paint because it lasts longer compared to water-based paint. Some of the ideas that have come up, such as colored bike lanes. One of the biggest issues with colored bike lanes is that it's a maintenance aspect of it. There, some of this, the City of LA, when they just first put it in, there was some issues when they put it in, in terms of their installation, at the time of the installation. But the colored bike lane creates some of the types of, you know, oil and other things and the pavement is not in good shape, it cracks up. So it's a constant maintenance issue. One of the last thing we want to do is to put in something on the street that we are not being able to maintain, it doesn't look good. A number of our Bicycle Advisory Committee members who are avid bicyclists, they said, "We don't want it because if it's going to look like this, this is not a good facility." So let's put something in we think it's going to last and we can properly maintain it. The next slide shows, this is in Long Beach along Broadway where it's a colored bike lane. It doesn't really show as well, if you look at the other monitor. It's, Long Beach has painted the lane green and, you know, it's a maintenance that they do on an ongoing basis. And as Ryan mentioned, these are experimental. So, you know, you're testing with the type of paint or the color of the green and trying to come up with the right combination. So we will be doing all the research with our staff that are very, very knowledgeable in this area to make sure if we're going to do something like this, we do it right. Next slide, please. And here's another example on Second Street in Long Beach where the green bike lane have been installed. Again, depending on the condition of the pavement, some of the coloring does not show as well and it doesn't appear that it's fresh. And we hope, whatever we do, it's going to look very classy as it's the standard in City of Glendale. City of Pasadena has a tan-colored slurry that they use. It's a colored slurry, as it's kind of shown here in, near the Rose Bowl. And that is another option. We don't prefer that, and I think we've shared that with everybody. But that's another option, to have a color slurry seal. So if you're slurring a street, you can maybe color it and with the right color, it could be green. That's also another experimentation that's going on. So we will be following that as other cities are doing. The next one is the, I basically mentioned the problems that are, we have received with paint. Another issue is safety. When it's painted, you know, it becomes slippery when it's wet. So from a liability standpoint, we want to be very careful that we don't install something that is going to harm bicyclists or cause accidents for them or for pedestrians as well. And the next slide with the slurry seal option, that's also another option. Again, maintenance of this, every three to four years, you have to maintain it versus the paint where there's more frequent painting that may be required throughout the year. And then the next slide is what's called a hot tape. This is a much more durable application, which our maintenance folks have really done research on it. And this, if you maintain it, so basically, it's something that gets heated and it attaches to the pavement and has a five-to-10-year life. The only problem with this is expensive. So if you were to, you know, put this thing for the entire stretch of a colored bike lane, say it's about a mile, it's very, very expensive. We are, we're thinking about an opportunity of maybe, similar to the slide that Ryan had, Brookline charros that he was showing where there's a symbol on the pavement and there are dots next to it, maybe something similar but in color we can experiment with. On a shorter stretch, in one of our streets that are here in the bikeway plan, we can test that. It may not be as expensive and see how that works for us in terms of durability, maintenance issues and so on. And that's some idea that we will be exploring. Again, since this experiment, we will require California Control Devices approval or FHW approval. We'll go through that process also. So I think that's the last slide, Fred. So just wanted to tell you that we're also looking at the maintenance aspect of the bicycle plan, making sure that we will be installing what we think is appropriate for the Glendale and we will be monitoring other cities as well as they experiment with this type of ideas. With that, Mr. Chairman, I will be happy to answer any questions. I believe you want to go to the.
Just one question, Mr. Chair, on the tape. And I read about this. I just want to confirm that it doesn't adhere well to concrete?
Dave Lu, or, Dave, you may have to come to the podium. Dave is, he's in charge of our striping and all our crew also. He's an avid bicyclist. So we have an expert from both ends. And so Dave can hopefully answer that question.
Yeah, it is true that the adhesion for pre-mark or hot tape, even thermoplastic that is preheated, does not adhere well to concrete in any shape or form. Spring Street down LA, they're actually doing, going to do a test where they're scarifying or basically grinding the surface to roughen it up to see if it improves adhesion. Everything we've tried, including primers and doing the same thing, it gives a limited adhesion advantage. But yeah, it will come off eventually sooner than it will on asphalt. It really doesn't bond as well.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Well, with that, I'll take public comments. If anybody hasn't turned in a card, please do so at this time. I think given the number of cards, we'll limit speaker's times to say four minutes. And let's start with Harry Zavos, followed by Stephanie Kindleberger. Mr. Zavos?
Chairperson Fuad?
Yes.
It only allows us to two, three, and five.
Well, let's try three in it, but if you really have something more to say, we can allow for that.
Thank you.
Please state your name and your address for the record.
Harry Zavos, 1406 East Mountain, Glendale. And let me say to begin with, people are going to ride their bikes. And attempts to accommodate them and particularly to enhance safety is something to be praiseworthy. And I think there are a lot of good suggestions in this report. I'm concerned, though, that in trying to accommodate bicyclists, we don't let the tail wag the dog. And what I have in mind is this, the bulk of transportation in this city is with cars and it will remain so for the foreseeable future. And the extent that you can separate cars from bicycles, all the better. But if you do so in such a way that you create congestion for automobiles, I think it raises a very serious problem. And it's not just a matter of convenience. I think the kind of irritation and impatience that comes with congestion is fertile ground for accidents. And I defer to the experts in traffic as to whether or not congestion doesn't enhance the likelihood of accidents. And with that in mind, I want to just comment on two things that have been talked about. One is the bicycle path on Brand Boulevard with cars backing in. I can understand why they back in because even with automobiles, if you're backing out of that parallel parking, you got an in shot, let alone a bicycle. But the kind of interruption in traffic that it would mean to go past the parking place, make sure the car behind you doesn't block the empty space and back in, it seems to me, raises serious considerations of congestion. And as again, I think congestion creates irritability and impatience, which leads to accidents. The other thing is with road diets, it just seems intuitive to me that if what you do is you reduce four lanes down to two lanes, essentially for traffic, granted, you have a turn lane which will alleviate some problem, you cut the road capacity of those streets to one-half or approaching one-half. And during certain hours where traffic isn't heavy, that may not be a problem. But when you're talking about those heavy peak hours, when people are going back and forth to work, it seems to me it creates a serious problem or can create a serious problem. And that is a serious problem, not just because of the inconvenience it creates, but because of the hostility that it creates on the part of drivers. And let me end with this. This is an intangible. When I was living on the west side of the city, I had an avid biker who was my neighbor and good friend and who actually did what he called trick paint jobs on bicycles. And he would share to me the kind of hostility that bikers would get from drivers. And the one thing I remember is drivers waiting until a bike got next to him and opening the door on them. And I don't know whether that's generally drivers or that's just the west side. The west side is different. But I think anything that reduces that kind of friction, rather than enhancing that kind of friction between driver and biker, is to be desired. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zavos. Stephanie Kindleberger, followed by Ray Barg?
Good evening. I agree.
Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Stephanie Kindleberger. I'm a resident of Glendale for 38 years now. I agree with Mr. Zavos. My biggest concern is these road diets. Getting from point A to point B in the city of Glendale is hazardous at best. And if you close lanes on major thoroughfares especially, it's going to make it even worse. That's what I would like to say. I'm opposed to that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's Ray Barg, followed by Sharon Doris. State your name, please.
Good evening. Ray Berg, 4120 Rincon Avenue. And I'm here on behalf of Walk Bike Glendale. We're a local advocacy group and we've been working closely with the planning department. We're very excited about the draft bicycle master plan and all the hard work that the city staff have put into the plan and the outreach efforts so far. And we really want to thank them for that. And we also want to thank the commissioners and all the other city council members for their support of bicycling here in the city. Do you have a couple of brief comments on the plan? We think it's very good overall. We do have a couple minor concerns and we submitted a letter. And they were just real basic, a few were route connectivity. We thought there should be a little, few gaps that should be closed and things like that. And we thought possibly a little more focus on the safe routes to school type aspect, which of these routes might be close to schools and that sort of thing. And one other thing I want to just touch on is the chero placement. I was riding the new charros on Maple the other day and I was very happy to see them there, but I felt that they were still a little bit too close to the car doors. The federal guidance, I believe, asks you to put them a certain distance from the curb. And I would really like to see Glendale kind of adopt a standard where they try to put them right in the middle of the lane. La Conyatta has put them right in the middle of the lane and they're great. Because if you put them the same distance from the curb, they tend to jump around when you're riding. And so then you kind of get directed like that where it's better to just be, go straight down the road. And then lastly, we just want to thank Jono again for all his hard work on this. And then want to extend our, our group to the planning department. We're going to be working on a Bike to School Day event with some of the schools. And then we're also going to be hoping to partner with the city to offer some bicycle safety classes over the summer, free for the public and that sort of thing. So we're very excited and we can't wait to move forward. So thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Doris, followed by Dennis Di Petro.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Hyder Doris. I'm a resident of Glendale for the past 32 years. And I've seen traffic increase dramatically over that timeframe. I also have an interest in this. I am a cyclist, so I'm very familiar with bike lanes, bike paths. I've ridden my bicycle in many different cities, some of them that you've mentioned, such as Long Beach, Santa Monica, Redondo Beach, Hermosa Beach, Huntington Beach, Newport Beach. But I have some real concerns about bringing this to Glendale. The main, one of the main one is traffic problem. We are an automobile culture. Majority of the citizens in Glendale are probably 40 and over. They depend on their automobiles. Getting them to ride bicycles to work, to grocery store, to shopping, I don't think is going to happen. And a question I have is the ratio of bicyclists in the city compared to automobiles. Given the number of people who are the cyclists, I'm wondering what sort of analysis you've done. We have approximately 200,000 people who live in Glendale. If we, are we doing this to accommodate 1%, 5%, 10% or 20% of the population? If we had 5% of the population who are cyclists, that's approximately 10,000 cyclists. And as someone who lives and works in Glendale, I don't see 10,000 cyclists. They often ride on the weekends and these are cyclist advocates with groups where they're 10 and 12. They're on Verdugo, they're on Ethel, they're on Glen Oaks. They ride two and three abreast. They don't ride in tandem. It's a real hazard for the people and the cars. And as Mr. Zavos mentioned, there can be some road rage on the part of the automobile drivers. But on the other hand, sometimes cyclists incite some of this anger by the way they ride their bicycle. I think enforcement needs to be looked at with cyclists and how is that going to be handled? The other premise is, I heard at one of the community outreach that the bicycle lanes would reduce traffic because people would ride their bicycle to work. I challenge this theory. I'm a consultant. I have done major projects for all of the major employers in the city of Glendale. And the majority of people who work in Glendale do not live in Glendale. They are not going to be riding their bicycle to work. Bicycle lanes in West LA, you probably are aware of this. I don't know how many of you have actually driven in West LA on Santa Monica Boulevard between 3:00 and 6:00 PM. It is a nightmare for the motorists. And this is something that we're going to be looking at if we bring this into Glendale on Brand and Central Avenue by reducing number of lanes. Also, the liability to the city, if we start experimental facilities, what types of accidents? The road diets for Ethel and Glen Oaks, again, on the weekends, there are a lot of cyclists. But how is this going to impact us on a daily basis? Traffic safety for the idea of the reverse angle parking on Brand Boulevard, I think is the perfect storm to cause serious accidents, possibly even a death. And then what type of liability is the city going to have? And what type of lawsuits are we going to be incurring for the city? Regarding Honolulu, how is the city going to quantify if the residents are in favor? Are questionnaires going to be sent to the residents, to the business owners? Is it going to be an open forum? I think you should have some sort of a silent confidential questionnaire that goes out to these citizens so they can give their input about how they feel about this. In summary, I think that the cost to implement this is large and it will benefit a few people and it could negatively impact thousands of Glendale residents. It's going to increase traffic due to reduced lanes. There's a potential for more accidents between drivers and cyclists. And the benefit for a few hundred people will impact maybe 200,000 of our residents here in Glendale. If the commission still feels that they want to implement bike lanes, I think they should look at the Verdugo Wash or San Fernando Railroad. Those are great locations to try to increase bicycle traffic and connect the cities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dennis Di Petro, followed by William Hooper.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Dennis Di Pietro, 825 Colorado Boulevard. Been a business owner in the city for the last 27 years. I can't possibly improve on what the last speaker just said and Mr. Zavos just said. So just to reiterate their comments, they were excellent and on point. The only other thing would be to say that obviously the concern as a business owner The only other thing would be to say that obviously the concern as a business owner would be on those roads that have businesses. Generally bicyclists right now are bicycling as leisurely, as a leisure activity or health activity, where people are looking for businesses. There is a very diametrically opposed use in that different transportation mode. So I think there's a severe danger there. The only other thing is, in those areas, for example, on Central or Broadway or Chevy Chase or Glendale Avenue, or any areas where businesses are affected, it seems like those business people should be directly contacted, not just to invite them to a workshop or something like that, but actually directly contact them to get their direct input, because this could severely impact a lot of businesses. Thank you.
Thank you. William Hooper, followed by Herbert Milano.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
State your name, please, for the record.
Yes, my name is William Hooper, and I'm a bicyclist, pedestrian and motorist who lives and works in Glendale. I submitted comments on the draft plan to the city staff in January, and I'm confident that my concerns will be addressed before the bicycle transportation plan is considered by the city council. I'm not here this evening, however, to repeat these comments, but rather to respectfully request this commission, as it considers the draft plan, to make a special recommendation to the city council to repeal Glendale's bicycle licensing ordinance, Chapter 10.60 of the Glendale Municipal Code, mentioned in Chapter 3 of the draft plan. As you may be aware, the city's authority to issue or require licenses for bicycles at all is circumscribed by Division 16.7 of the State Vehicle Code. Among other things, this law requires that cities and counties with licensing ordinances for bicycles actually issue the licenses to ensure that the ordinances cannot be misused to prohibit bicycling entirely. As I and others have discovered over the past several years, however, it appears that the Glendale Police Department, charged by our ordinance with this responsibility, is no longer willing or able or interested in registering bicycles. Even my letter to then Police Chief Adams making a written application for a license was not sufficient. This places the city in technical violation of the state law. As a practical matter, though, I agree with the police department's apparent conclusion that registering bicycles is not a valuable use of our limited law enforcement resources, particularly when the maximum registration fees and penalties are limited by state law to amounts unlikely to begin to cover the costs of administration. The state required registration indicia are too small to identify bicycles and traffic, and there is no statewide database of registrations to permit bicycles that are stolen to be returned to their owners. I'm aware of no recent efforts in Glendale to enforce these license requirements, but their repeal, which is also recommended in the city of Glendale's adopted Safe and Healthy Streets Plan, would be an important symbol of the city's commitment to promote bicycling, and it will remove any possibility of the ordinance being misused to harass bicyclists in the future. Indeed, public outcry over such harassment or the possibility of it has caused other Southern California cities, including Los Angeles, Santa Monica, Long Beach and Burbank, to all repeal their own licensing ordinances in recent years, and I respectfully urge this commission to recommend that our city council do likewise. Thank you for considering my comments.
Thank you. Herbert Milano, followed by Tummar Garantz.
Commission Chairman Ford, Commissioners and Staff, my name is Herbert Milano. I believe that the presentation made with regard to these proposals by Mr. Jana Bagdanyan and the rest of the staff, I think is quite excellent, very thorough. Many of the questions that I had were answered during that presentation. But I think that what we have here is a, a couple of issues having to do with a culture change. We are a very automobile-centric community. Our roads have not been thought about with regard to bicycles in the future. And, and I think that Los Angeles has the good idea with regard to the sigla via, on April the 15th, you have a chance to participate in Los Angeles and ride those, those streets. It's an amazing experience, I can tell you, because my family and I did it. It is my hope that Glendale takes on maybe that idea to start changing the culture, because we have a significant problem with obesity, especially with children and school-aged children. It would be a nice idea if we were to have like one Sunday out of the month along maybe Glen Oaks Boulevard and start encouraging the general public, because one thing is to look at the number of bicyclists today. The other way of thinking about it is, what do we want in the future as a way of changing our culture to become a lot more active athletically in the use of bicycles for that purpose? But I do have a problem with regard to city policies as it tries to move towards, let's say, road diets. The problem is, is that for a very long time, when it comes to building permits and planning, the city council has given continually a significant number of parking variances, meaning fewer parking spaces than multifamily buildings require. That forces an additional number of cars onto the streets. So it has been going on for a very long time, and I think that this commission should really take a very good, close look at the manner in which these parking variances are recommended by builders. They save a significant amount of money, oftentimes millions of dollars, by having fewer parking spaces than those buildings require. Those buildings need additional parking, guest parking, for example. And by promoting those variances, you actually reduce the possibility of, in the future, of actually having proper road diets and the use of that park, that particular area next to the curbs for bicycle lanes. I think that it is contrary to a vision of a city that wants to energize this population and make it more, and have children become more athletic. I think that overall, the idea is a good one, but we have significant problems having to do with the way we currently do our city planning, and that the fact that we are not really thinking ahead of time on the needs for bicyclists in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Tummar Garantz, followed by Jean Gleason, and I apologize for mispronouncing your name.
That's all right. I'm quite used to it.
So am I.
Yeah. My name is Tummar Garantz. I live on 1106 North Louise Street. I've been in Glendale now for two years. I am a daily pedestrian cyclist and car driver as well. I guess the main thing I'd like to address is road diets. I know that there's a lot of concerns around road diets, reducing the number of lanes, and I think it was even mentioned, reducing lanes to add bike lanes. However, I've lived in a couple of cities now, including San Francisco for eight years, in Sydney, Australia for five years before moving back here, and I grew up in LA. But, you know, we, we've seen them implement that in a number of places, and in San Francisco, specifically on Valencia Street. And, you know, we, we had a couple speakers mention the density here as far as the, the car use, and I think in some of the places I've lived, they would consider that a little bit laughable. I mean, no offense at all, but Valencia Street was extremely dense as far as car traffic. They did a road diet in exactly the same manner, two lanes reduced to one each way with the left turn lane, bike lanes added. And not only did nothing explode, but businesses have thrived, the number of car accidents has decreased, as well as cycling and pedestrian accidents. And right now, that's basically a bicycle and pedestrian superhighway in San Francisco. So although I know there's concern that, you know, reducing those lanes will cause some kind of major issues, I have seen in practice that that doesn't normally occur, not when the streets are planned, you know, to be correct streets for those kind of proposals. So not your main thoroughfares, I don't know what effect, you know, Brand and Central and all of those would have, but Honolulu east of the shopping center, Verdugo, which I've ridden on my bicycle at 5:00 PM and in the morning during traffic peak, traffic hours, and I don't find that it warrants anywhere near the two lanes that it has. So, you know, I mean, that's just my experience. There was a couple of, you know, mentions of heavy peak hours, closing lanes making things worse, and that has not, again, been the experience and been the, you know, what has come out of research from, from some of these road diets that have occurred for over 10 years now in San Francisco. Also, you know, some of the attitudes around bulk of transportation with cars and will remain so, or, you know, people 40 and over depending on cars. I see actually a lot of older people having to depend on being pedestrians in Glendale, which is horribly dangerous. And I think part of the problem with that attitude is, again, it's, it's locking us into what the culture currently is, instead of trying to find what we can do to change the culture to make sure that, you know, in the future, we, you know, we're not catering to cyclists, we're creating cyclists from everybody else out there, not just cyclists, we're creating pedestrians. When you have a road diet, you have a street which is much more usable by everyone, including cars. I love driving down streets with road diets, because it gives me left turn lanes, it gets people out of my way, and it's not two lanes that everyone's competing in trying to, you know, drive like a freeway. So I just wanted to, you know, reiterate that there's a feedback loop there. You know, we do something like that, and it creates more, more cyclists. So even though the percentage is slow, is low now, you know, the idea is to increase that percentage. So, thank you.
Thank you. Jean Gleason, is there a final comment? Anybody else have any other cards? Please turn them in.
Good evening.
State your name, please.
My name is Jean Gleason. I live at 1362 Andina's Drive in Glendale. I've lived here for 30 years, and I've been a cyclist. I'm probably the 1% cyclist that some of the prior speakers have talked about. I just wanted to say that not everybody cycles just for recreation, and more and more with $4.50 gasoline, people are cycling. I took the train this morning down to Santa Ana to go to the Bowers Museum, and the first people off of the MetroLink train that we were getting on to go down to Santa Ana had bicycles, about the first five. And there were a fair number of people riding their bikes as cold as it was this morning down Glendale Avenue, which is not the easiest road to ride during rush hour. But bicycling is a very convenient and safe, sometimes, way to travel, and certainly a much healthier way to travel. I am very happy with the plan as it's constituted, and I applaud the efforts by everybody so far to, to get this plan going. I love the fact that there are now bike lanes on Glen Oaks and on Foothill Boulevard. I want to see more of those. I've ridden those streets many, many times for many years. And I don't know whether it's just psychological, but it's certainly nice to have that lane and feel that that is my space, and I'm not going to get a car that comes over too far on my side. And it seems to work. I think the motorists appreciate it, too. If people are having problems as they're driving with bicyclists getting in their way and causing irritation, it's probably because the bicyclists have no other place to go. There's no lane. The Cheroles are nice, but they're still not a lane. And by delineating a lane, what you end up with is a psychological sort of separation between the cars and the bicycles, and that psychological separation is very important. Now, when it comes to road diets, I concur with the prior speaker. I've seen them in many, many places. I think one of the biggest problems with traffic in Glendale these days, and the police would, I think, concur in this, is trying to keep traffic slowed down. And one thing that road diets do is they slow down traffic. They separate the bicyclists who are riding their bikes with a lane from the traffic as it proceeds down whatever street is being, is being narrowed. The traffic slows down. I personally have ridden many, many times, I ride almost every year in Europe, Europeans use road diets all the time to allow the traffic to be wider sidewalks, full bike paths, and the traffic lanes. The traffic flows, and of course, what the Europeans have that we don't have, which I would think is a, something to think about in the future, are traffic circles, because what you have in that case, then, is traffic doesn't have to stop at the stop sign or the traffic light, and it's allowed to proceed depending on traffic from side. So the combination of road diets plus traffic circles allows a continuation of traffic, which means it might be going slower, but the person gets from A to B faster. It happens all the time in Europe. It happens, La Jolla Boulevard in San Diego has done it. They find that it carries more traffic, even though there are two less lanes, plus the bike lanes and wider sidewalks for pedestrians. So I think the plan is a good start. I applaud the city for doing it. I think we're a little bit behind the curve, but it's a good beginning. Thank you.
Thank you. If there are no more cards, I'll close the public hearing.
Did you, Mr. Bagdanyan, did you want to respond to any of the speaker's comments in particular?
Mr. Chairman, I'll just quickly go through them and see if there's areas that, again, our number one priority as part of the implementation of the plan is going to be safety. So we want to make it safe. We would like to make sure that we follow any standards or guidelines that have, are in the Caltrans manual or the California Traffic Control Devices, MUTCD. These are all the different guidelines that we have in order to follow. So we will be doing our best to follow those guidelines. I think as far as getting community input with respect to the road diets, I think there were comments made in terms of Honolulu. Just want to emphasize, I think I misspoke, but March 28 at 7:00 PM at the Spar Heights in North Glendale, which is a Wednesday, that would be one community meeting we're going to have in order to discuss the Honolulu road diet, make sure everybody is aware of it. A comment was made not only to inform the residents, but also the businesses, property owners. We will do that. Anything on the north and south of Honolulu, we'll be sending out a letter with some of the, the changes in the lane designation so that people are informed about it. We will put that information on the city's website. So we really want to make sure we get enough public input and outreach from everyone. I think there are, you know, pros and cons, many comments that have been made that everybody is concerned about. Brand and Central, Broadway, those are our major arterials or minor arterials. We definitely need to look at those in terms of if we're going to change the lane configurations, whether we do reverse angle parking or putting in bike lanes or change the angle parking to parallel parking. Those are going to take a lot of work and time. So those will be, that's why they are included in the study corridors that we are going to do as part of the plan. With respect to the bicycle licensing, I think that's a good point. We're really not enforcing it. So that's something we will work with city attorney, with police department, to see how we can repeal that. There was, there's a process to change the ordinance, so we will do that. I think that would be something that is very doable. It may take a little bit of a work, looking at Ms. Enzoni, but it's doable, and I don't think right now it's being enforced, no city is licensing any bicyclists. We don't have the resources, honestly, so, and police department, I'm sure, will agree with that. There was issues with respect to enforcement. We will be working with the police department on, in general, on safety. And with respect to the enforcement of bicycle, basically motor vehicle laws that are in the vehicle code, whether it applies to bicyclists or motorists, we will be doing that. And currently, there is quite a bit of activity, actually. At one of the commission meetings, I will invite the police department to give you an idea of citations or the type of violations they see. Also, we will be looking at the type of accidents, you know, bicycle accidents. Are those bicycle accidents caused by the motorists, or are they caused by the bicyclists, and what percentage? What improvements can be made? We are actively going to be doing a lot of education. Part of the Safe Route to School grant that we have received, we have almost a half a million dollar in looking into educational program. We got that grant from the federal government. So we will be doing a lot of education, especially at the school kids level, so that they know how to properly ride a bike. If they can ride it to, to, to school, that's great. What facilities can we create in order to, they feel safe when they're riding to school? So that, that will be done. Let's see. Traffic circles and the like are also part of our plan. It's included some of the, in, in the bicycle transportation plan. So any streets that we think we can create a bicycle corridor, if it's a four-way stop, we can put in traffic circle that has a traffic calming effect. It's part of our traffic calming guidelines, too. That's something we will also be looking at. I think that would, generally, I think, those are my notes from the comments that, that we receive from the community.
Thank you. Who would like to start on the commission? Mr. Wiseman?
I'll go ahead and begin. I wanted to start by thanking the, the Bicycle Committee for all of the hard work that they've done, the citizen participants, as well as staff, and everybody else that has spent so many hours coming up with this. It's really appreciated that, I think, you've looked at this hard and seriously, and we're going to be able to, after, after a number of years of basically not really doing much in the city of Glendale in terms of bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, I think we're at a point now where we're going to be able to move forward. And one of the issues, especially in these times of tight financial and budget situations for cities, is that having this completed plan provides the basis for us to apply for funding, which can come from other sources other than the general fund of the city. I think everybody knows that we have a major safety problem in the city of Glendale with pedestrian and with bicycle accidents. And I know that was one of my primary motivating factors for deciding to participate in this commission. And it, it's a little bit puzzling to me that, on the one hand, you hear a lot of people saying, oh, there's to me that on the one hand, you hear a lot of people saying, oh, there's too much speeding in Glendale and too many dangerous drivers in Glendale, that when we actually talk about maybe doing something that's going to slow some of these people down, suddenly, you know, everybody's all up in arms. In terms of the bicycle situation, specifically on Honolulu, I'm going to address briefly, I've participated in the last two years in doing bike and pedestrian counts at Honolulu and La Crescenta. So I have a pretty good idea of, at least in the proposed road diet area, what the usage is by bicyclists, both on weekends and on weekdays those counts were done. And what we are seeing is increases in use of those roadways by bicyclists. It's going up, it's not going down. When you factor in things like rising fuel costs, there are going to be long-term economic pressures that are going to be tending to push people out of their cars and into alternate modes of transportation. And I really think we need to be prepared for that and not shirk our responsibilities to make improvements in that area. Many, there are many potential bicyclists in Glendale who don't currently ride because they don't feel it's safe to do so now. And any improvements that we can make in our infrastructure that will encourage more people to come out, we will see an increase in that. It's a little bit more of a long-term thing, discussions such as the Verdugo Wash Bike Path. Ideally, I would love to see something like that. It solves so many problems in terms of physically separating bicycles from other traffic. Unfortunately, it is going to be, you know, probably fairly expensive and difficult to implement something like that. I know Councilman Weaver has mentioned publicly, as someone who worked for the Army Corps of Engineers and was actually involved in the construction of the Verdugo Wash, that, I know Ryan mentioned the Linear Park. I know Councilman Weaver has also mentioned using a cantilevered system of some kind to provide a bike path. And again, I don't know how much that would cost. I expect it would probably be pretty expensive and it would take some time. But it does have the advantage of physical separation on one of the very few north-south routes we have to connect the different halves of the city. In terms of the road diets, I have also seen successful road diets. Probably the one that I'm most familiar with is the one that's on Latuna Canyon, just east of Sunland, where a four-lane road with a center stripe was converted to a two-lane road with a left-turn lane and striped bicycle lanes. The average speed on Latuna Canyon has not been reduced by very much that I've been able to observe. I probably drive on it several times a week. I'm kind of hoping that we will get the same results with the experiment on Honolulu for the road diet. And I do agree with the comments that we need to be careful to do a very good job of outreach. We don't want people to be taken by surprise. We want them to know what is coming and to have them be able to provide their input and their concerns. I think that's extremely important. That being said, I do support that particular road diet experiment. I drive on that stretch of Honolulu on a regular basis. I don't know if you're going to be able to do it all the way back to Whiting Woods, but what I would hope to see from that would be conversion of the streetscape to a more pedestrian-friendly and bike-friendly type of situation, like currently exists in the Montrose Shopping Park itself. And if we could extend that westward along Honolulu, I think that would be a good thing. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Who's next?
Go ahead. First of all, I would like to express that I'm so proud to be the commissioner on such a wonderful group of people, you know, living in this city. You know, this is amazing, you know, the depth of the knowledge of the people who came here and they talked on both sides. And this is very unique to all the transportation, most of the transportation problems in this country. You know, there are two sides to every story and both sides have a lot of good points, whether it was from selecting commissioners, you know, Mr. Milano mentioned that, and then, or, you know, wonderful experiences bicycling in Europe and also the people who were considered about the safety of bicyclists and our children here. And we, two people spoke about that. That was such a wonderful speak. But as a commissioner, when I sit up here and I represent everybody in the city of Glendale, I have to consider a balanced approach to all the transportation problems in the city. Whether it's a small minority of the people who would like to bicycle in the streets of Glendale, I have to consider their interest. Also, I have to consider the interest of the majority of the people who would like to drive alone in the car. But one thing that I cannot compromise is safety. As a commissioner in the city, I have the responsibility of holding the people in the city and making it as safe as possible for the people who drive, bike, ride on the bus, walk, kite, swim, or whatever form of transportation that they wish to do. By the way, I don't like the word road diet, John. Can we change that to something else?
I didn't create it. I don't know. It's skinny in some things, so that's why.
Well, you know, one thing, road diets don't have to be in conjunction, Mr. Snyder can attest to that, in conjunction with bicycles. We talked about road dieting and bicycles at the same time. You know, road diets are measures to improve safety. And in here, I have to, to be able to propose a balanced approach to this one, I have to consider locations that we are considering in this proposal. Mr. Snyder, I've done a wonderful job of doing this. This is one of the best reports that I have ever seen. I like it because it's very balanced, you know. It doesn't drive you one way or another. And Mr. John, thank you for doing such a wonderful job of preparing this, you know. But Mr. Snyder, one thing that I was very interested in was the table that was presented here on Chapter Five, page 14, that talks about bicyclists and ADT. I assume that's average daily traffic?
Yeah, ADT is daily.
Okay. If you look at the middle column, you know, it says, yeah, you know, enough bicyclists here. But then when I look at the column on the right side, it shouts no to me. You know, there's a, there's a big differences here, especially on Verdugo Road and Mountain Avenue. We have 55,000 vehicles driving on that roadway a day versus 135 bicyclists. Now, that said, again, I have to again rely on the safety of these bicyclists. And I'm not sure if, I've driven on, I've never ridden my bicycle on Verdugo Road, but I've driven that road maybe more than about 300 or 400 times in my lifetime. I don't know if the road diet on that street is a viable choice for protecting, maybe something else. I don't know. Narrowing the, what would be the width of the lane, Mr. Magdalene, if we produced?
Let me look at my staff, but I think if we were to Verdugo Road based on the existing width, I want to say we, by keeping the on-street parking, because we have residential along Verdugo Road, we have schools along Verdugo Road, it would be a seven-and-a-half-foot parking lane, a five-foot bike lane, and a 10-foot travel lane, one in each direction and a 10-foot center-to-way left-turning. Is that?
About.
This is, again, depending on where we're talking about. It's north of the college, north of the college.
I'm talking about north of Sports Complex.
Yeah, north of the Sports Complex.
Negotiating those winding roads.
Yeah, that would probably be the, within a foot or two of what I mentioned. So two parking lane on both sides, about seven, seven-and-a-half feet. We narrow down the parking lane. We can stripe a five-foot bike lane, six, six-foot bike lane, and a 10-foot lane, one lane in each direction, and a center-to-way left-turn lane. A 10-foot center-to-way left-turn. That would be the maximum, I mean, that would be the width that we can fit into Verdugo Road in that stretch that you mentioned.
And in your professional opinion, is that a safe driving route for, what is the average speed on, you know?
The speed limit on Verdugo Road is 35. And the only issue with Verdugo Road that from a safety standpoint, we have, it's not a straight street. It is curvilinear. There are a lot of curves.
And it's downhill?
Yeah, it has a downhill slope, but the biggest challenge with Verdugo Road that we need to look at from a safety standpoint is the curves. Because we have quite a few curves that you have to drive. And once you start narrowing down the lanes, any errors in a driver's going around the curve, if they change their, they could be either in the opposite side or they can draw toward the bike lane. And so that would be a concern of us in terms of safety. So we would like to really study that in detail, making sure that we don't create a problem.
Without getting too much detail of the technical aspects of this, you know, I guess you're asking us to make a recommendation on this. My recommendation would be, the idea is very good. Mr. Snyder, you've done a wonderful job here, but I would recommend that we look at each location again, especially Verdugo Road and Brand Boulevard, for the concerns that, you know, the business community may have on these issues. You know, I like my, you know, children and my grandchildren to ride on Verdugo Road on bicycle. Don't misunderstand me. But I want them to be safe when they're riding their bicycles on those two roads.
Actually, what you've recommended is already in the plan, because that's why we've designated those as study corridors.
Right.
That would require more thought and discussion with the community.
Right. One last question, and I let the other commissioner speak on this one. What is the threshold on the average daily traffic on a normal four-lane highway or artery?
We can go up to...
A road diet?
Oh, for the road diet. There has been a lot of studies and discussions on the road diet. There are streets, cities have done road diet up to 20,000 at the high end and then have down at 5,000. So there's a long, a wide range of streets. In the bicycle transportation plan, where I believe we included between 10,000 to 15,000 for ADT, average daily traffic, where we would, we should consider streets that have that. Honolulu, for example, is in the 11,000 to 12,000 ADT range. So that could give us a good idea, potentially, of, in our own community, how that looks. But there is a lot of debate among traffic engineers, including our own staff here, was what would be, what's the appropriate level of, you know, the threshold that a road diet, a street should be considered for a road diet.
What is, what is the traffic on Orange?
Orange Street?
What's the volume on Orange?
Orange Street, if, what, well, Orange basically starts at Doran to the north, if, if, south of the freeway, and it dead-ends at Broadway, technically.
The reason I'm asking...
12,000.
12,000. The reason I'm asking is because one of the slides that was shown here, you know, was very close to my heart. And I worked on that project, that the Spring Street bike way. The reason that was very successful was, but Spring Street is a one-way street, you know, if nobody noticed that. It is a one-way street. And it's a coplet, actually. It's a street and Main Street, you know. Main Street and Spring Street are going to be the two. So maybe we can consider something, you know, doing a two-way bicycle on Brand may not be viable. Maybe we want to consider something, you know, going north-south on one street and coming back on the, on another street. I don't know. My point is that we need to look at this a little bit more in detail. My recommendation would be to look at, support the conceptual idea on this one, but look into different scenarios that are presented here to see if there are really viable options.
Commissioner Magdalen, I think you made a very moral point. That's what we started to really look into, the details of some of those streets like Brand or Central or Honolulu and Verdugo Road. And if we really wanted to address all the concerns or issues associated, we will never get this plan done. So we thought, putting it in a study corridor. And I think one thing I was just looking at it, Orange Street, for whatever reason, we're not in the study corridor. We will add that. It was one thing that was discussed as part of our...
Mr. Snyder mentioned it was, it was actually a dashed line, which is, which is a step ahead of studies.
Yeah. So it was, it's not actually spelled out. So we can add that as part of that. I went through while we were talking, and it's not included. So we can make that a study corridor. But in general, that's what we want to do. Look at all the different aspects of it and see if it impacts the businesses, very, very important. If it impacts the residents, it's important. And how, what are the safety implications, as you mentioned, so.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And thank you for the public for your comments.
I'll take it. And I'm going to start where my colleague ended. I believe, John, there's a study by ITE that was published recently recommending against road diets on streets with over 10K ADT, 10,000 ADT. If you can, if you can look into that. The reason I bring this up, I believe in building on success stories. I hate to take a boulevard such as Brand Boulevard and turn it into an experiment. Now, having said that, I think Honolulu is a good location. 11,000, 12,000, that would be fine, considering the geometry of the street, considering what's on the street, where it connects, where it starts. I'm not dead against it, but I do believe there's a study that suggests no more than 10,000 ADT. I also want to commend, good job. Good job on the study. A lot of hard work. You can tell by reading at it. But having said that, I think each street has to be looked at again just before implementation. Public outreach should be a very important component. Business outreach should be a very important component of it. And then, and then, once restudied, go to the implementation phase, once everybody, everybody agrees. Maintenance is a big concern of mine. I spoke with our bikeway section down in the city of LA this morning. And what they're doing right now, they're experimenting in mixing paint and concrete. And just like bus pads, actually, just saw cutting the bike lanes, going down four inches and then pouring in painted concrete. It's expensive, but it's going to last you much, much longer, hoping that you don't have any, any buses facing bus wheels, you know, running on those concrete pads, because obviously that's going to impact it. But it's something that we need to look into, obviously, because often we build things without considering maintenance costs and down the line. They're ugly, they don't work well, and they're a hazard. As far as enforcement, that's a big issue for me. I live in the Rossmoan area and honestly, on a Saturday or Sunday morning, I'm more afraid crossing the street, crossing mountain to Nibley Park, I'm more afraid from bicyclists than motorists. They come down zooming 50, 60 miles per hour with no regard to any stop signs, any stop signs. So that's something that we need to look into. It's not going to stop the project, obviously. And we have motorists that are, you know, 100 times more aggressive and we have more violations from the motorists' side, but, but we can't just overlook this component of it. As far as reverse angle parking, I can't even believe it's in the study. I'm dead against that. And I can sit down and argue this point forever and I will win. I guarantee I will win. Obviously, you know, I can agree with everything, otherwise one of us will not be needed, right? So, so angle parking, the reverse angle parking will create more of a hazard, if you ask me, in addition to creating the delays to traffic, which in turn will irritate motorists and bicyclists. And not only now, you're worried just to park your vehicle, you're worried not to side swap vehicles parked next to you, angle parked. You're worried about not jumping the curb behind you and hitting somebody on the sidewalk. Honestly, 50, 60% of the population in Glendale, they don't know how to parallel park. So, you know, angle parking is a big concern of mine. So, you know, angled parking is a big concern of mine.
Is that a recommendation, or it's a...
It's a recommendation. It's a recommendation. I also want to caution on using road diets, I'm sorry, using bicycle lanes to slow down traffic. Now, road diets, chokers, I do understand, but these are two different things. And we need to be very careful on that. On the bicycle licensing issue, I, I do agree, it's, if it's, you know, we don't have the staff for it, and if it doesn't help on doing anything, but that's a, that's a different One other thing that we need to consider, when you have road diets, you have delays. When you have delays, you have noise pollution, and you have air pollution. And there are thousands of studies that will prove that. So, that's also directly impacting quality of life, as much as we'd like, you know, to see more paths, more bicycles, and I'm all for that, honestly. We also need to consider, just like speed humps or speed bumps, when you install them, they do slow traffic down. Well, there's two of them, not too far from where I live, and I'm going deaf, because of the noise of the, of the tires bumping up and down on them. So, you know, every good thing has a bad thing, so, so, we need a good balance here. But all in all, kudos, again, good study, staff, hard work, contractor, very, very good work, and good comments from my colleagues as well.
Mr. Kubian?
Thank you very much, Chairman Fuad. First, I would like to extend my thanks to all of those participants in the Bicycle Transportation Plan Committee, and to Mr. Snyder for his extensive work and great knowledge. Again, I am going to be echoing some of what has already been set up here. The issue of safety, as a participant in this subcommittee, I can attest that, in my view, I believe the city is putting the concerns of safety first. And I'm saying that based on the way I see that they're very measured, in the way that they're approaching this enormous idea. This, what I think is a very good idea, to start changing Glendale. I know that when John O. goes out to the community outreach program, he's not shoving down any plan down anybody's throat, he's not trying to persuade people to accept this plan, he's going out there to hear what the residents have to say. And those residents include a big elderly population, that's part of the city, who, you know, maybe don't want bicyclists anywhere near where they live. But, but as they're going through, as we're moving through this process of introducing this idea to Glendale, it is my feeling that, that they're being very measured, and in a very good way. The idea of safety, I think, isn't just about, you know, a cyclist getting slammed by a car door, or necessarily a car bicyclist accident, that's obviously the ones that come to mind. My issue, or my concern also, and I raised it many times in the meetings, subcommittee meetings, was the idea of emergency response, and especially on Verdugo Road. I believe that, I, I don't want personally, any tampering of streets, where emergency vehicles will in any way be impeded, or slowed down. And I know that there's experts in the daily volume, and whether or not something will be touched. I know you guys are considering that, that's always a factor in your mind. I just wanted to bring that up again, because to me, that's, that's something that should not be forgotten, and is part of, and is part of safety issue. I, echoing Commissioner Sahakian's ideas or thoughts on, on the maintenance, and building on success stories, as, as my other commissioner, Magasarian, had mentioned, I would like to see the best use of dollars, if that means taking a little bit of time, reevaluating. I just, my, my fear is putting down something, paint, that's just going to chip off. And as we hear today, I, I can hear that it's already, this quite, this concern may be moot, because you already seem to be addressing that thought, and you're very careful, and you're, you're dotting your i's and crossing your t's. But that is the concern for me, is I don't, you know, this is a luxury in a time of, of great fiscal tightening here in Glendale. So, if we are going to proceed with this cautiously and carefully, that we do it, you know, keeping that, that fiscal part in mind, that we, we would just be a horror to have to redo things. Another big issue for me is enforcement, and I've spoken to police officers off the record, and had their concerns about cyclists. I'm, I'm all for this, this plan, and I've, I've made that pretty clear. However, I do believe that with privilege comes responsibility. And with that, you know, I have a concern of, you know, there are the cyclists who are just awesome, they're great, I can see them, you can tell, they've, they've, their helmets on, they're respectful, they know, they know the rules of the road, but then we have others that aren't. And unfortunately, that's how it is with every, every group, there's always, you know, the bad apples. I'd like to see, as you had mentioned, John O., the participation of the police. I'd love to have more input from them, on how they feel they can best enforce, because as it's been echoed today in comments, there are packs of, and these are like, this is the extreme, and these are the little horror stories, but this is what non-cyclists think of when they think of bicycles, they think of traveling in packs, and they're untouchable. And unfortunately, after speaking with some police officers, they, they, you know, confirmed that, that sometimes going down Brand Boulevard, they just can't stop them, to tell them they've done something wrong, because they're traveling, you know, in such a way, in such a manner. I want this to be done in the right way, I want them to be involved in putting in, giving their comments. And then, John, I just want to, if you can just clarify, because I know that, going through the, the meetings, you were saying that, once this, this plan is, you know, put forth and is accepted, and you have to repave, let's say, certain streets, and on those certain streets, you know, you'll just add, you know, some sharos. Is it just limited to sharos? Are you, would you, what would you be doing, if you're...
If, let's say, a typical street already has, either it has already in the plan there sharos, or it actually has bicycle lanes. Biggest problem right now, we have some, pretty good Glendale prides itself with the quality of our pavement. So, as we paving streets, if it has a Class II bike lane, which you're actually striping bike lanes, we will do that. But we don't want, we can't go out there and do what we're doing on Honolulu, for example.
Right.
To grind slurry and put in those things, because there's not enough money for that.
Right.
So, we will incorporate bicycle facilities from the plan, as part of our street improvement program. Which happens in, we have a five-year plan, so we will try to target any facility that is in this plan, in that five-year plan. Outside of that, if a street has already very nice pavement, we will put in sharos in the interim, until the time comes that we will put in the bicycle lane. That would be our, our logic and strategy to, to deal with that. Unless we get some grant funds, or something that will expedite that opportunity, we will do that.
And one, one last, really quick comment, is Commissioner Weissman had beat me to the punch on that, there are a lot of people, and my feeling, in my sense, that would like to bicycle, but don't, because they fear it's not safe. And I would love to see that this plan become Glendale's field of dreams. I'd love to see that, when we start building, in a measured way, certain areas that we do see increased bicycle activity in Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you, I just had a few comments. First of all, I am, I served on the Bicycle Committee, and I'm extremely pleased that Glendale is about, hopefully, about to adopt a modern bike plan, which will help us get grants, and which will help citizens certainly bicycle. The staff has been very positive on this bike plan, promoting bikes in the city, but they've done it in a measured way. They, they're not shoving it down anybody's throat. The outreach that I've been to, in our committee meetings themselves, it's been a very measured, analytical approach, thinking about safety, congestion, and things like that. So, I'm very pleased that the staff in the city are positive, and the bike plan may be coming to fruition. Several of the speakers spoke about congestion, I respect those comments. I, I think most, most of the discussion here tonight, I think, has sort of been consumed really by, by road diets. And, and they, and they do have their set of issues, but eighty percent, ninety percent of the plan is not road diets, it's merely, really accommodating existing bicyclists, and hopefully, promoting safety, so bicyclists feel safer on existing roads, and providing some, some clarity as to where bikes can be, and where they can go. So, I think, on the one hand, eighty percent of the plan is merely, is, is, is sharos, a little, some bike lanes, without, without road diets, or road slimming, if people object to that term. So, I think from that point of view, in a way, it's acknowledging the bicyclists that are already there, and, and providing some clarity to the motorists and to the bicyclists, where they should be, on the pavement, signage, and so on and so forth. And hopefully, with some clarity, with some delineation, there'll be more bicyclists in the future, which may make the parking reductions work, if, if people think there's not enough parking in the city. On the road diets, I, I mean, and I think, and I think the city's taken the proper approach for the road diets, they're going to counsel for each road diet. Ultimately, in many ways, it's a political decision to be made by the, by the political leaders of the city. When each one is approached, there are studies, there will be studies, as to how it will affect traffic flow, congestion, safety, so on and so forth. As, as Mr. Salkin said, we want to build on success, we don't want, like the Santa Monica Diamond Lane twenty years ago, which set back carpool lanes of the city, you know, until now. So, and I'm, and I know the city's aware of that. One of the speakers mentioned outreach to businesses, I think Mr. Bogdanian said, on, maybe it was the parking meters on Brand, you actually went door-to-door.
Yes, we did distribute fires door-to-door, we work with the merchant association, so we will definitely try to do that, including the Montreux Shopping Park, although they're not part of this, but there are people who are driving on Honolulu and up through the shopping park. So, we don't want anybody to say that, because of the road diet, people are going to avoid Honolulu, and they're going to take alternate routes, so thereby, the foot traffic, or the traffic that goes by the, in the shopping park, has been reduced. We will do traffic counts also, you know, before and after traffic counts, so we can kind of measure what the impact of the road diet is, does it divert traffic to other streets? Although there's not a really good alternate, other than Honolulu, but we will, we will measure that, make sure everybody, to the extent possible, is, and if we have to do a second outreach, based on the first one, if we really don't get a good group coming to the meeting, we will continue to do this, because it's very, very important, that everybody can't come back and says, oops, you know, now we have, where did this come from? Where did the striping come from, and we didn't know about it? So, we don't, we want to avoid that.
As Mr. Diopetro said, you know, in business areas, you do, you do want to reach each business person, you don't, you don't want to just have the meetings, you want to actually make this contact proactively, and I think you've done that.
Yeah, we will, each, everybody's going to get a letter from us, notifying them about the meeting. We will do our best to work, make sure that the businesses and the property owners along the way are also informed.
Well, and finally, and just to, to conclude and repeat a bit what I said, I think when you're presenting this, next steps to council and so, I would, I would delineate road diets versus the rest of the plan, because road diets are an issue, and that's, most of the speakers, I think, when you got to the heart of it, that's probably what they were concerned about. But whereas the other thing is just existing reality, and making reality safer. So, that's all I had. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I truly appreciate all the great comments we received from each one of you, that really capsulizes what we have trying to do, and as, as some of you mentioned, that we want to take a measured approach, and we want to gradually build this plan, make sure it's successful, make sure we don't run into any safety issues, and everybody's happy with the plan, because the last thing we want to do is, we have a bad, bad road diet somewhere, and then it will kill all the road diets in the future. So, that's obviously, so I think Honolulu, selecting Honolulu was a good choice to start with, as something which is in the middle, in terms of the daily traffic, and gives us that opportunity to, to try that. And hopefully, we'll be successful, we'll do our best. I think the idea of kind of separating the road diet issue from the rest of the plan, and showing that we actually are putting Class II bike lanes on some of the streets, we're putting sharos. And the other ideas, as far as colored bike lanes, or those Type B sharos, something we will pursue, and if they're doable, or we can experiment on one street or another, to see how that works, I think we're all for that. So, one of the things I mentioned, I think I forgot to mention, is that we have some close to three to four hundred thousand dollars, what's called the Measure R funds. And as soon as the council approves the plan, our goal would be to go out and at once, put in all the sharos or striping that we can do, rather than wait for some of the other resurfacing projects to come through. So, if it's sharos that we know we can install, bicycle signage that we know we can install, we will do that. Educational programs, we will pursue those, part of the Safe Route to School funding that we have received. So, you'll see a lot of those activities happening, and I think there was a lot of emphasizes on the enforcement component. I have already met with the police department staff, we have a, a traffic safety task force, we will be expanding that task force, and I will also request that, that we come back to, the commission will give you a presentation on our activities as we go forward. With that, Mr. Chairman, I have no other comments.
I do have one question, if I may. As far as the SEQA requirements, the environmental requirements, how is that going to be handled?
Our planning department is going to prepare a, a SEQA review, whether it becomes a neck-deck, or mitigated neck-deck, of some sort, that's what they're going to look at, the entire plan. Because this will also impact the circulation element of the general plan, it will require a planning commission review also, so when we prepare the SEQA document, we will take it to the planning commission. This is, is going to be within this timeframe, we want to go to council. Planning commission approve, or recommend approval of that environmental document. So, when it goes to council for adoption, it will already have a clearance from SEQA, as far as the requirements are concerned.
And as far as transit routes and bus stops, that's, that's being studied as well?
Yes, we will be looking at, as I think earlier mentioned, like Brand Boulevard, because we have a lot of transit running on Brand. So, the implication of putting in bike lanes, with the angled parking, with the traffic volume and the transit, that, that's why that street is so complicated, and it only took us twenty years to put meters on Brand. So, I hope it doesn't take twenty years to put any kind of bicycle facility on Brand, but it is a very complicated street, and we all expect Brand to do a lot of things. And so, it's very important that we look at that, but transit impacts are important as part of this plan.
Yeah, I, I think it's very important right now to, to, to make sure that we don't give this false impression to the public, and to the council members, about the Class, Class I proposals that are in this. Class I proposals are wonderful, I mean, I like them, you know, I like that L.A. River Bike Path, but they're very, very expensive, and they're very time-consuming to, to, if, if we can buy the property next to the, to the railroad on San Fernando Road, with four point eight million dollars, if railroad sells that to us for that price, just going through the, Mr. Salkin said that, going through the SEQA process for that one, that would be an extremely expensive, even if Caltrans approves the SEQA and environmental document, cleaning up that, that property is going to be extremely, extremely expensive, because of all the byproducts of the toxins that are in the soil there.
That's the reason we include it as a long-term plan, honestly, it is a very, the right-of-way is very, very complicated, and if the commission has heard about high-speed rail, and expansion of the MetroLink services, adding another track, the railroad is notorious in terms of really protecting that right-of-way, and not giving up, even if they don't know what to do with it, they're going to be very, very tight in allowing us to, so, it's a very narrow schedule, but it, you know, doesn't hurt to plan, and if there's an opportunity, we'd like to take that opportunity.
Nothing else, what's next?
The chairman.
Any commissioner's staff comments, before we do that? Mr. Weissman?
I just had a couple of things I wanted to mention. First one is, there was an announcement recently by Los Angeles County, that they are going to be embarking on a major project to install bicycle infrastructure in mostly unincorporated areas of L.A. County. There was an article about it in the L.A. Times, I think, yesterday or the day before. I forget how many miles of bike improvements are planned, but it's a significant number. And wanted to mention that approximately ten to eleven miles of, of bike infrastructure improvements are going to be made in the unincorporated area of La Cressenta. And to the extent that those new infrastructure additions can augment or hook up with things that we're doing, I think it's going to provide better facilities for the, the people in that area, because... because the Crescenta Valley, as you know, is divided up into multiple jurisdictions, La Cañada, unincorporated La Crescenta, City of Glendale, and then the City of Los Angeles and Sunland Tahanga on the extreme west end. So I think that is part and parcel of some of the good improvements that are coming our way. The second thing I wanted to mention is that in January, Councilman Najarian appointed me a representative for Glendale to the Metro Citizens Advisory Committee, which is a group somewhat vaguely similar to this one, it's an advisory body to the Metro Board. I didn't really have anything to report back from on that, I've attended several of the meetings. As you can imagine, the focus of the Metro CAC meetings are much more having to do with regional transportation issues rather than the local, purely local issues we deal with here in Glendale. And so the two general meetings that I've attended so far, the first one involved environmental justice issues and the fact that large transit operators like Metro, if they change service or if they change fares, and if that change has an impact that falls disproportionately on certain communities, like minority communities, transit-dependent communities, they have to be able to justify that. And the other item that was talked about was compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act. Metro being a huge transit agency, I forgot the exact number of boardings, but there's a huge number of wheelchair boardings. And every single Metro bus, according to my understanding, is equipped with equipment to handle wheelchairs, either the fold-out type ramp or the kneeling bus-type buses. But I will continue to attend those meetings and if there's any information covered there that's relevant to Glendale, I'll report back on here. The third thing I wanted to mention involves what Mr. Milano was talking about when he spoke at Oral Communications. He talked about annual reporting on pedestrian injuries. And it was my understanding, John O, from talking to you previously, that the City of Glendale was getting some assistance from the Cal Poly Pomona Traffic Engineering Department and that some of the issues they've been studying and the statistics they've been gathering are going to come back to us. And apropos of what Mr. Milano was asking about, I was wondering if you can perhaps give us an update on that and let us know if we're going to be hearing that information anytime soon.
Sure. Commissioner Weissman, what we have contracted with Cal Poly Pomona to see what is a better methodology in terms of analyzing pedestrian safety in the city, where the high accident locations are. I think, and we're putting together, I mean, they've already done some preliminary work for us, we are working with them to give them, it's a lot of data that they requested, more of a, from an academia standpoint, they're looking at it. And we were trying to determine a methodology that would be easier in terms of where the high accident locations are, where we need to concentrate our resources. There is this issue that comes up constantly that we are the worst city in, and I think we need to really objectively look at that. If I told you that among the 55 cities in the Office of Traffic Safety Study that says we have the highest number of seniors among the 55 cities, that is, we're being compared to. So in terms of number of residents, so about 30, 32,000 seniors that we have. So consequently, if you have more seniors and there are more walking seniors, the potential for more accidents is there versus City of Santa Clarita or City of San Bernardino or any of those cities that we get compared to, that the population of the seniors is less and they're not, that many people are walking. So it's just that, you know, that is a ratio we want to look at. Overall, if we want to bring to the city council and the commission to look at, where do we rank overall in terms of pedestrian safety? We're above the average, we are between the 55 cities comparable cities, we're like 35. So I think those are very important things that we need to really look at, the focus and see where the problem area is, look at these statistics, and those are the types of things we will be bringing. We are working on an overall safety report that the city council has asked us, similar that was mentioned to here, that they want to know what activities we're doing, what work we are doing. And we will be sharing that with the commission at the same time, we're going to present that to the city council. So those types of things are very important of putting in some measures, looking at where the issues are, where the hotspots are, trying to address them, whether it's on educational perspective, engineering or enforcement, those are very focused areas.
And I would really appreciate seeing that information. I know this has been going on for some time, but I think all of us sitting up here have a very strong focus on and interest in safety primarily. And I think we would all be very interested in hearing what comes out of that and maybe taking it a bit further and making that an annual agendized type of presentation for this group.
We're actually putting together a foundation of something like that, which will look at everything we're doing from a safety standpoint. Is also the foundation of that was a pedestrian action plan that was a year, almost a year ago, Commissioner Yakubian was also instrumental in that. So we're taking the action plan, spread it over how much money we already got from Safe Route to School, we've got a lot of, we're doing engineering analysis, we're doing surveys and so on and so forth. So it's coming together and definitely that could be a foundation for more of an annual look at everything.
Yeah, and I would echo the annual appraisal, I think Mr. Milano had a good idea and I see it's already in process.
I just had a quick, I don't know if you, if you're aware, they just announced, the California Department of Public Health just announced, and this is in line with their, it's up to us pedestrian safety initiatives and their Safe and Active Communities branch, these mini-grants that they're now offering, you probably have already have wind of that, but that's coming up next month, starting the window of that. I don't know if we're ineligible for it because we've partake, participated in the Walk to School of funding. But anyway, I wanted to just bring that to your attention, perhaps something to look into. I think it's meant to target the 18 and under crowd with education on pedestrian safety. And then my last comment would be a personal thanks and appreciation to you, Commissioner Weissman, who I believe you were such a fine, fine chairman this past year and you set such a great example for the rest of us who had the pleasure to be with you. So I wanted to extend my personal appreciation and thanks.
Anything else?
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?